Hello, I'm Joe Hamilton, publisher of the St. Pete Catalyst, and I will be the moderator of this virtual forum for candidates running for Pinellas County School Board seats in District One and District Seven. Pinellas County serves more than 100,000 students. The candidates for District Run One are running at large, which means that everyone in Pinellas County will be able to vote for one of these two candidates. District Seven, on the other hand, is a single district seat. Only the voters living in District Seven will be able to vote for one of the candidates. I'm grateful for the dedication of these candidates. It's not easy to set family and work aside to run for public office. This forum is facilitated by the League of Women Voters for the St. Petersburg area and the League of Women Voters North Pinellas Counting. The League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of informing voters and defending democracy. Please visit Pinellas Voters Guide for complete and unbiased information on voting and candidates. I would like to thank our nonpartisan community co-sponsors: American Civil Liberties Union Pinellas Chapter, National Organization for Women Pinellas County and West Pinellas Chapters, University of South Florida Center for Civic Engagement. Now let's get to the candidates. Candidate Meyer is unable to attend the forum tonight. Therefore, in accordance with the League's rules, when only one candidate is president -- present, I will read a statement written by Candidate Meyer, and then Candidate Hein will make a statement. We will then move to the two District Seven candidates. I'll ask them a series of questions, and they will have one minute each to answer -- they will have one minute to answer each question. They each have two minutes to make a closing statement at the end. The order of the candidates' closing statements was determined by drawing straws. Since we are in a virtual format, we are unable to take questions from the audience during the forum. Please note that the views expressed by the candidates do not represent those of the League of Women Voters or the forum's co-sponsors. And now I'll read Candidate Meyer's statement. "I believe wholeheartedly in the value and promise of our public education system, and I know that educating the next generation is the single most important component of a thriving community. That's why after 17 years as a successful businesswoman, working for a Fortune 100 company, I followed my passion and became a middle school history and social studies teacher. In addition to that, I've applied and met all the requirements to be awarded my Florida Teaching Certification. As a Pinellas native, mom, and wife of a firefighter, I understand the unique challenges families are facing. Every child that comes through our school system is precious and deserves access to the tools and resources they need to succeed, and parents need an advocate on the school board who will stand up for their children and their rights. Having experienced the COVID-19 crisis from the perspective of teacher, mother, and first responder family, I know that so many of you are facing unprecedented times and have made incredibly difficult decisions. Parents now more than ever need options when it comes to educating their children. We must also support our teachers by ensuring that their personal needs are met, as well as providing safe working environment that is conducive to learning. Education as we know it has changed, and we must be forward-thinking in our approach to ensuring that every child in Pinellas County receives the quality education they need and deserve. My commitment is to our children, parents, and teachers. We must improve our education system, and my experience, leadership, and willingness to do the real work of educating our children is desperately needed on the school board. I thank you for the opportunity to share my vision. I invite you to continue sharing yours with me. You can reach me via email at StephanieGMyer@gmail.com or on my personal cell at 727-515-0331. The most important endorsement any candidate could receive is your vote, but you may also view a list of my official endorsements, as well as my initiatives, at votestefanymyer.com. Thank you, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 3rd for Pinellas School Board, District One. Together, we will put our children first." And now Candidate Hein can make her statement.
Hi, everyone. I thought I would take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about me, about my proven advocacy in public education, and why I'm running for school board. A few minutes goes by fast, so if you would like to learn more, please do visit my website and Facebook pages. Both are VoteLauraHein. My name is Laura Hein, and I am a candidate for the District One seat on the Pinellas County School Board. This is our county-wide seat. What I hope to leave you with in these few minutes is a sense of my values, of my experience, and of my demonstrated commitment to public education. When you elect a school board member, it is not just for today, for the vital issues at the forefront today, but for four years, and for the opportunities and challenges that we will all face in those years. And the last four: Who would have imagined the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting and ensuing impacts on our schools? And certainly coronavirus and its significant impacts today. Born and raised in Tampa, my mother was a public school teacher and our Girl Scout leader from six years old to my earning the Gold Award, the same as the Eagle Award. And my father had served in the Army during Vietnam, was in insurance, and was our softball coach from six years old to my playing Division One sports in college. I went to public school for K-12, and I was bused during integration. I was raised with a sense of duty, a sense of community service, looking around you and seeing where and how others could be served. This was further imbued in me during my four years at the U.S. Naval Academy, where ship shipmate self is a driving creed. At Navy, I studied aerospace engineering, interned at NASA, and graduated from the Army Airborne School. Women were 8% of our graduating class at Navy. I served for six years as an officer in our Navy, participating in deployments to the Middle East, two with national tasking. Coming back home to Tampa, I became a licensed general contractor and earned my MBA in finance, going to school at night. If you have flown through the Southwest Airlines Terminal or visited the Tom and Mary James Museum in downtown St. Petersburg, you've seen my work. A year after the museum opened, I was asked to become the executive director of the museum, a position that I serve in now. Along the way, I fell in love with an amazing man, Hank Hein, and had two children, a bit later in life than most, but I was busy. While my mother was a public school teacher, and I've been educated through a master's degree in public schools, our children is where my deep engagement with public education began. We had our first son, who's now nine, in preschool at a private school in St. Petersburg. I would drive every day past our zoned elementary school and ask myself, why don't we go there? The school was a Title I, letter grade D, school. 74% of the students are economically disadvantaged and 50% minority. I visited, I got to know the teachers and the principal, I sent my son there, and I got involved. We started an independent nonprofit to bring community awareness and support to the school. Then I became president of the PTA, and we initiated programs around family and community building, supporting our teachers to thrive, mental health, sustainability, and academic achievement and enrichment, to name a few. We had a great team. It is a wonderful school. Both of our boys are there now and thriving. I've spent hours with, supported, and learned from our teachers at our school. And it's a validation of that work that I received the endorsement of the Pinellas County Teachers Association. I have studied educational issues and successes across models. I have engaged with our school board and district, our legislators. I've been to Tallahassee on education. I've read the studies, I've read the books, and in five years, I have learned a great deal and had a highly positive impact. I want to talk all of the powerful specifics with you: equity, excellence, unleashing and doing better by our teachers, standards, testing, mental health, ESE, specialized services, our homeless students, coronavirus, school safety, all of it. The field is vast, and the issues touch the lives of our families. And we need people with vast experience and personal commitment to be the ones on that board, asking the questions and doing the work. What I promise you is this: I will serve in this position and work my tail off, as if my own children's experience depends on it, because it does. Although this certainly is not just about my children, or all of our children, is it? Our public education system educates more than 90% of our country. These children are the ones who grow to be our families, our communities, our workforce, our economy, and our military. It is a family, economic, and national security issue that we beat excellent at public school on a broad scale, not a handful of schools. We can learn from successes and apply them more broadly, create a district of the future. I love this country, all of it. I love our community, our county, with its beauty, its potential, and its challenges. I ask you to hear my experience, my values, my personal and family commitment to public education, to reach out to me with any questions that you might have, and I ask for your vote for me, for Laura Hein, a mother, a veteran, a businesswoman, and an experienced and committed public education advocate, to serve on your school board. Thank you.
Please welcome Candidates Carl Nurse and Caprice Edman. Welcome, folks. So I'll be asking you 11 questions, and we'll be alternating the answers. Candidate Edman, you'll be answering the first question first. What skills qualify you for this position?
I have over 18 years of experience working with children and families in various capacities, as well as in an educational setting. I'm also a business owner. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's in educational leadership, a master's in elementary education, as well as a certification in infant family mental health. I have advocated on a local, state, and national level for all children.
Candidate Nurse, same question. What skills qualify you for this position?
Well, I will... Then, in the last 10 years, while I was on the city council, I worked in the schools surrounding Melrose Elementary, Campbell Park Liquid, which were three of the five schools that the school system called "failure factories." And so I worked with the principals, primarily the principal at Melrose Elementary, as they went through a number of principals until they were able to turn the school around. And so I will say that I've run a business, not a business, not self-employed, but a business with 48 employees for the last 34 years. So I have deep knowledge of finances and of school finances, and how we uncover the money so that we can invest in the classrooms, which is where we really need to invest that. I had experience doing that in both on the city council and on Tampa Bay.
Thank you, Candidate Nurse. We're actually going to stay with you for the next question. Candidate Nurse, what is the biggest educational challenge facing your district?
The biggest challenge really is that, at any given year, we may have 40% of the students who are doing reading and math below grade level. And frankly, it runs across the system. In some areas, it's worse than that. And so even though we are graduating, you know, about 80% of the students, many, many of them are not really prepared to go out and earn a living and are not really capable of going to college. And so we've got to improve the quality of our schools and invest in catching up the kids who are behind. Earlier, we can invest in children who fall behind, the easier it is. You know, when you're in kindergarten, you can't be more than a year behind, but in 10th grade, you could be three or four years behind in a course.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, what is the biggest educational challenge facing your district right now?
Academic achievement. Oftentimes, in our district, our children are not performing proficiently, and that's because of various factors. And what I'm going to be advocating for, or continue to advocate for, is that we begin addressing the needs of the whole child. When we start meeting the basic needs of our children, we'll see more academic success and greater ability for them to handle some of the challenges that they may face in school and outside of the school system. Something else that we need to consider is that if our children aren't reading proficiently by the third grade, there are statistics that show that there's a pathway to the school to present pipeline. As my opponent mentioned, people are, or our youth are graduating, but many of them are not ready for the real world. So we do need to make sure that we are providing resources and programs at an early age to let them know of the infinite potential that's available for them to succeed.
Thank you. We'll ask you to remind you to keep your answers to one minute as per the timer on your screen. Candidate Edman, we're going to be sticking with you for question three. What should be done to improve family engagement with the school system?
Great question. I have done work with a nonprofit on a local and national level as it relates to transformative family engagement, and I'm proud to share that during several listening sessions, parents want better communication. And something that has transpired during this time is that the district is working hard to establish better communication. But what I would like to see is more, providing more family programs that support them, as well as children going out into the community and hosting resource fairs, whether it's at a school or a rec center. We are going to have to bring resources to our families that may not be able to make it to our schools, or feel that there is a lack of trust. We're going to have to do a better job with building those relationships, and some of the work that I've done relates specifically to building family engagement.
Thank you. Candidate Nurse, what should be done to improve family engagement with the school system?
Well, I'll tell you that when I worked over at Melrose Elementary, one of the things that we found that worked well was the PTA meetings or the family back-to-school meetings became meals. And so it worked, it worked really much better if the family could bring all their children to school, have a meal, and engage with the parents, and that it overcame, engage with the teachers. It overcame some of the logistical issues that happened, and we found much more response to that. We also found that parents responded much more to texts than they did phone calls, sort of like children who won't call you back but will respond to your texts. And so you have to try the different technologies. And the other thing, the major thing, is that we're going to have to move towards community schools. Melrose, as it reopens this year, is a wraparound school, so it has a whole series of social services around the school. Those are all things that help.
Thank you. And staying with you, Candidate Nurse, what is your position on expanding the curriculum to include teaching about the human effects on our local and global environment?
Well, you know, we continue to have ever hotter years, more hurricanes, more intense hurricanes, worse fires, worse floods. It's right in front of us. And so it's really, there's really a need to teach this largely in the science area. But the other thing that's exciting about that is that the two fastest-growing jobs in America today are a wind farm technician and a solar installer. And so clean energy is also a tremendous opportunity for new jobs, and it does excite young people. And so I would hope that as we scale up our career readiness work, that we would do a better job connecting the students with this work. And the school system needs to do much more efforts to make our buildings efficient, which is part of the work towards, you know, clean energy and better jobs.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, same question. What is your position on expanding the curriculum to include teaching about the human effects on our local and global environment?
I think it's important that we include teaching our children or our students the effects of environments. As a science teacher, I have firsthand experience of doing that work and partnering with organizations outside of the school district, like Sierra Club and USF St. Pete, to bring in those resources to our school. On a larger scale, we can do a better job with ensuring that not only our students are understanding climate control and the impacts of the changes that are occurring in our environment, but we can ensure that we are working towards a greener schools, greener communities. Some of the things that I've learned during this journey of running for school board is that we are lacking...
Candidate Edman, this will be our first lightning round question, excuse me, and this goes to you. We just asked for a yes or no answer to this particular question. In 2016, 76 county voters supported the referendum for a half-mill property tax for the schools. That referendum will again be on the November 3rd ballot. Do you support that referendum?
Yes.
Candidate Nurse?
Yes.
Moving on to question six. Candidate Nurse, we'll start with you for this one. What should the district do to ensure that students who are not going to college have a successful career?
Well, one of the things that I hope to spend a lot of time on if I get elected is to scale up the work where we essentially create a path to the middle class for all students, where they put together a plan with counselors, and so that they understand that there are 100 different options that they have. Almost everything will require education beyond high school. But there are lots of apprenticeships, internships, certifications, two-year programs. It's really an endless list of opportunities for kids, but we really need to put together, I would say, an individual plan for each high school student, and some of the things they can learn in high school, but we need to make sure that they're connected so that when they leave high school, they go on to their post-high school pathway. I think that is a huge opportunity to change the dynamics and radically reduce poverty.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, same question?
I believe that the district should start at elementary level, exposing students to the various opportunities that are out or are available. Here in St. Petersburg, we have Pinellas Technical, we have SPC, USF, Eckerd, and a host of other opportunities available for our children. But specifically relating to our technical schools, if we start exposing our children at an early age to those trades, they'll be more aligned to find out or learn something that piques their interest and follow through with attending that program or learning more. I think that it's important that we begin building more relationships and providing opportunities outside of the school system for our kids or our children to learn more about various careers.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, I'll be sticking with you for question seven. What is your perspective on school choice and public funding for charter schools, private schools through vouchers, and how should the district and the school board provide support and accountability of all schools receiving funds, including private and charter schools?
I am a proud public school supporter, and our legislators, they are the persons or people that have determined the law that relates to the school board's decision to fund or support charter schools. So following the policies of our school board, I would ensure that that charter school is held accountable based on the policies and practices as governed by our legislators, as well as working with our legislators throughout the year to find better laws or build better bills that support public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nurse, I'll repeat the question. What is your perspective on school choice and public funding for charter schools, private schools through vouchers, and how should the district and the school board provide support and accountability of all schools receiving funds, including private and charter schools?
Well, you probably know the school system has to, the public school system has to approve charters. And we've had a rather mixed result with charters. We have some that are really excellent, and then we've had a number that have failed. And so I would say that we need to take a look back and see, what did we do that allowed charters to open that then failed and closed often with just a few days' notice? And then the school system had to catch up and put it back together. But parents want choices, and the legislatures made it very clear they're going to get choices. I think the one opportunity that we should think about is that if the legislature says charters don't have to abide by a whole series of rules and regulations so they could be more innovative, what is the logic of handcuffing the public school system with all those regulations? And so it may be an opportunity to have innovation at the public school level as well.
Thank you. Candidate Nurse, question eight is for you. Starts with you. The ways people communicate has changed. The ways people communicate have changed significantly since the advent of the internet and social media. How should schools adjust to better communicate with each other to resolve issues between them?
Well, we do need to use the social media as a communication technique. Unfortunately, to a very significant degree, the social media, it has evolved into a sort of a hateful speech comment or commentary. But it's how people communicate. And so the school system needs to, you know, be on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, Twitter, and text, and all the rest of that, so whatever we can do to connect with families, we need to use all that technology. But we need to try to do ways that it is between whoever is speaking for the school system and the family back, not a situation where it's a sort of a posting of who can post the most hateful speech, which is what sometimes we see, well, often, we see on Facebook.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, I'll repeat the question for you. The ways people communicate have changed significantly since the advent of the internet and social media. How should schools adjust to help students better communicate with each other to resolve issues between them?
By providing training and support, by allowing our children to understand that there are proper ways or internet and social media etiquette. It's extremely important now during these times that we are addressing the needs of all children, but ensuring that they are sensitive to the diversity of our population, as well as being held accountable when they are speaking or communication going back and forth becomes threatening or hostile. The district must continue to communicate on multiple platforms. They are using text, ClassDojo, email, Microsoft Teams, Canvas, and additional resources. But we also have to ensure that those technologies are secure.
Thank you. Candidate Edman will stay with you for another lightning round question. This is a yes or no answer, please. The Pinellas school system has an overall grade of B on the state's evaluation. Does that say to you the school system should stay the course?
No.
Candidate Nurse?
No, we have to get better.
Candidate Nurse will stay with you for question 10. Start with you for question 10. How would you improve minority teacher recruitment?
Well, I think you need to send the recruiters to the historically black schools for a start. That's probably the number-one thing, most significant things. And then, actually, even in high school, we need to raise the possibility to children that they could end up as teachers. You know, we don't promote that as much as we should, and as a society, you know, we would be better if we held teachers to the same high regard that they're held in Scandinavia, where they're considered, you know, the very top of the list. But I think those are a couple of things that would help.
Thank you. Candidate Edman, how would you improve minority teacher recruitment?
I would begin by going out into the community or contacting our HBCUs and fraternities right here in our community and seeing or checking in on the interests. I would also go to our colleges. We have USF here, SPC, Eckerd, numerous colleges right here in St. Petersburg. And then I would begin to branch out to all of our HBCUs. We also have a great opportunity here to tap into people that would like to transition to teaching. I am an educator that transitioned to teaching, and I know just from my experience of working with minority educators, that people want to come to this field. It's just a matter of what barriers are in place, what support will they receive, and how they will be treated once they are employed by the district. And those are areas that we can improve in.
Thank you. The 11th and final question starts with you, Candidate Edman. What are the top priorities you would address in the first six months of being on the school board?
Addressing the needs of the whole child, as well as making sure that our budget is aligned with our goals of having 100% student success. September 8th will be the second reading of our budget. We have a $1.6 billion budget, and about 58% of that goes to our general operating funds. I mentioned before that I would like to see equitable funding in our schools. I mentioned before that I would like to see equitable funding in our schools. And again, that's going to require us to do some digging and looking at line by line, what areas can we, what areas we really need funding or what areas we can hold off. And again, I know our budget will be approved September eighth, which is when they have the second hearing of that. But just ensuring that we are being fiscally responsive, responsible, and connecting with families and building community partnerships. Those are the three things I would work on.
Thank you. Candidate Nurse, what are the top priorities you would address in the first six months of being on the school board?
Well, I think the first thing you have to deal with is the COVID-19 situation. I would expect that will still be the case in November. And so we're going to have to deal with, you know, however the world has changed and make sure that we are able to teach students in a safe fashion and that the staff is safe. In terms of the budget, frankly, you just begin asking questions and turning over rocks and looking for opportunities to save money. That's what I successfully did on the city council and on Tampa Bay Water. The major outreach, I would like to begin the process of radically scaling up our connections with the private sector and post-high school schools so that we could begin to build a much more robust pathway for the sixty percent of the kids who are not going to graduate from college. I think that's the kind of outreach that I could do, that I could start immediately.
Thank you, candidates, for your answers. We'll now go to closing statements and each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. The order of closing statements was determined by drawing stalls, straws, excuse me, and candidate Edmund, you'll go first.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to share with everyone my platform and my qualifications. I am a highly qualified candidate for the seat because I have been doing this work consistently on a local, state and national level for over eighteen years, working with children and families in various capacities, from youth in foster care to being an educator now. This, we have so much at stake right now. And my platform of sharing that there's equity in education and advocating for all children and instilling that we have, ensuring that we are doing a better job with recruitment and retention and family engagement and community partnership, it's relevant. It's extremely relevant during these times, especially with COVID-19. I am an educator and I am working in our schools during this time. I'm also a parent, so I'm having firsthand experience of what's working and what's not working. And moving forward, we need someone that has consistently done the work and knows what they're doing to ensure that we have high-quality education for all children. So on or before November third, please vote Caprice Edmund for Pinellas County School Board District Seven. For additional information, you can visit my website at EdmundForEducation.com. And remember that the voters are going to have to decide this race. I have been endorsed by several organizations and leaders in our community, which include Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Florida Education Association, Suncoast PBA, as well as Sierra Club, CIU, and the list goes on and on. The most important endorsement would be earning your vote on November third. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nurse, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I believe the goal of a school system is to help every child reach their potential. There are two areas where I believe we need to invest more time, money and energy. First, we need to ensure that kindergartners are ready for first grade before we promote them. It is no favor to students to promote them when they're not ready for the next grade. And this logic applies at every grade. The earlier we address students who are struggling, the better. Second, a high school diploma is not enough to earn a middle-class living. Most students do not get a traditional BA degree and are largely left to fend for themselves. We can make a major improvement in students' performance and futures by helping them design a learning path to good jobs. This includes apprenticeships, internships, certifications, one- and two-year college and technical programs. To bring these advances, the school board needs a diversity of skills to improve schools and to prepare the next generation to earn a good living. A school board without one member who has managed a real business lacks the needed skills to control its $300 million capital budget, its $150 million health insurance bill, or even its $25 million utility bill. After thirty-four years of running a business through four recessions, I know how to handle big budgets and control costs. The school board needs these skills more than ever to succeed in these uncertain times. We need to get the resources into the classrooms to improve our schools. I will bring the skills and the experience needed to make this a reality, not just the usual political soundbites. That's why the Tampa Bay Times said I turn ideas into results. I'm Carl Nurse and I ask for your vote.
Thank you both, candidate Edmund and candidate Nurse. Wonderful answers. In closing, I would like to remind you of the upcoming election deadlines. You must register to vote on or before October fifth. Please refer to PinellasVoterGuide.com or call the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections. Please register now to vote by mail. You can request a mail-in ballot anytime between now and October 24th. We strongly encourage you to request your mail-in ballot well before the deadline. Please mail your ballot at least two weeks before Election Day. You can also drop off a ballot or vote in an early voting location prior to Election Day. On Election Day, your ballot may only be dropped off at a supervisor of elections office before 7:00 PM. A recording of this forum with closed captioning will be available on the League of Women Voters YouTube channel after the event. Be sure to join us next Thursday, 7:00 PM, for the Sheriff's Candidates Forum. Have a good night.